Book of Hebrews, Chapter 12, the first four verses, those will be the verses that we'll be using for all these special meetings. Looking unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith. Hebrews, Chapter 12, verses 1 through 4, and the Word of God says, "Wherefore, seeing we also are compassed about with so great a cloud of witnesses, let us lay aside every weight and the sin which does so easily beset us, and let us run with patience the race that is set before us." Looking unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith, who for the joy that was set before him endured the cross, despising the shame, and has sat down at the right hand of the throne of God; for consider him that endured such contradiction of sinners against himself, lest ye also be wearied and faint in your minds; ye have not yet resisted unto blood, striving against sin. Dear Father, Lord, again, I pray and ask, dear God, Lord, for your blessings upon, not just this sermon, just this meeting, Lord, but, Lord, we've got six meetings, Lord, in this, the sixth of the series of special meetings, Lord, that you moved me to hold this year, the seventh being in the month of December to come. Lord, we need you. We desperately need you. This church needs you, the entire body of Jesus Christ needs you, Lord. The world has gone stark raving mad, and you told us it would. Lord, but the depths to which it continues to go, Lord, I don't think any of us ever thought that we'd see in our lifetimes these things, but they are upon us. So I pray, dear God, Lord, we desperately need to have our hearts changed. We need revival. We need to be renewed with strength, Lord. We need to be new with our vigor. We need to be renewed with an adamant, not just a desire, but an adamant intention of waging the spiritual war that needs to be waged. I mean, we know the end. We know that we're victors. But, Lord, we need to stand now because times are coming back, Lord, upon the Church of Jesus Christ that it hasn't seen for hundreds of years, Lord. People are going to shed their blood for their faith in great numbers, Lord. We need to be prepared for that. So help me, Lord, tonight, to preach this message, Lord, as you gave it to me and as you intended it to be delivered. And let it speak to the hearts, Lord, of those that are here tonight. And we pray and ask, Lord, in Christ's name, amen. And the Lord laid on my heart these verses to use as a theme for this month's special meetings. And contained within these four verses are the six messages that I'll be preaching. I will be taking them in order, with the exception of this evening's, which is going to be from the first half of verse number two, "Looking unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith", which is the theme of the entire series of messages. That would be the context, if you will. So let's begin with this evening's message. Lord Jesus Christ is our ultimate example as we live out our lives for Him in this temporal, mortal world. When God chose to reveal Himself to us in a manner in which we could truly relate ourselves to Him, it necessitated that He did so exactly as it was done. Go to First John, John, Chapter 1, Gospel of John, not First John. John, Chapter 1, verse 14, should be a familiar verse. John 1:14. "And the word, capital W, the word was made flesh, and dwelt among us; and we beheld his glory, the glory is of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth." That "dwell" there means "to tabernacle", "tabernacle". That's significant. This evening is the last evening of the feast of tabernacles, which is when the word became flesh and dwelt among us all those many years ago, when God was born as a man. Emmanuel, God with us, would spend the next thirty-three and a half years as a human being. When you think about that, all the fake and false gods that are out there in the world, you don't ever hear one of them who stepped down from their deity and their glory to become a human being in order to provide a means of salvation for humanity. And how he lived his life was exemplary to the extreme. Thirty-three and a half years, never once sinning, never once, not in thought, not in deed, did he ever violate the laws, the precepts, the commandments, the testimonies, the statutes, or the judgments of God the Father. That alone is reason enough to want to look into his life and to follow his example for ourselves. The three and a half years of Christ's public ministry were absolutely incredible. Everything that he said, everything that was done, and absolutely every single miracle done during his ministry was done, not in his own power, because he had set that aside. He had laid aside his deity that was done by God the Father and God the Holy Spirit. If you're still in John, go to Chapter 14 of Matthew. John 14, verses 10 to 15, Gospel of John, Chapter 14, verse 10. "Believest thou not that I am in the Father, and the Father in me? The words that I speak unto you, I speak not of myself; but the Father that dwelleth in me, he doeth the works. Believe me that I am in the Father, and the Father in me, or else believe me for the very works' sake. Verily, verily, I say unto you: he that believeth on me, the works that I do shall he do also, and greater works than these shall he do, because I go unto my Father. And whatsoever ye shall ask in my name, that will I do; that the Father may be glorified in the Son. If ye shall ask anything in my name, I will do it; if ye love me, keep my commandments." That is, to me, an amazing thing. "Greater works than these shall he do, those who believe in him, because I go unto my Father." Lord Jesus Christ referring to believers, you and I, being given the ability, because he has returned to the Father, to do greater works than he did during his three-and-a-half-year ministry. How's that possible, you ask? What could be greater than the miracles that our Savior did? Well, the one that immediately comes to mind for me is being used by the Holy Spirit of God to be able to guide a lost soul to salvation in Jesus Christ. There is no greater miracle than that. And every one of us has the privilege and opportunity to be able to partake in that. And I have countless times in my forty-five years of being a Christian been given the incredible privilege of being a part of such an amazing miracle, given the choice between being able to lay hands on people and heal them, like so many charlatans out there claim they can do, or having that singular privilege of being able to lead washed souls to Christ for salvation. Give me the soul winning every time, every time. Sickness, injuries, death, they're all going to come irregardless. Yeah, that'd be a wonderful thing. That'd be a great thing. If you could honestly do that, then you ought to be spending eighteen hours a day, seven days a week, now six days a week, maybe in church on Sunday. Healing people. You don't see them out there doing that. Much of lying, fates, but you don't see them leading anybody to Jesus Christ for salvation either. Just as with the Lord in his earthly ministry, okay, it is done, not in any power possessed by you or I, but by the power of the Holy Spirit of God who dwells within you. It's a conviction of the Holy Spirit. It's the Word of God. That's how somebody comes to Christ to get saved. You don't do it. You're just the medium by which the Lord uses to reach somebody with that. Matthew, Chapter 17, verse 20. "And Jesus said unto them, Because of your unbelief, verily I say unto you: If you have faith, as a grain must concede, ye shall say unto this mountain, Remove hence to yonder place, and it shall remove; and nothing shall be impossible unto you." You have faith to move mountains. Compared to leading somebody to Christ. If you had enough faith to get saved yourself, don't you have enough faith to tell somebody else? Great faith comes from having had all of one's trust and hope settled squarely on the Lord and Him alone, exactly as you had to do in order to be saved. That's the point you had to come to. And from this comes great humility, as you realize you can do nothing without Him, but you can do all things through Him. Philippians 4:13, "I can do all things through Christ, which strengtheneth me." Then there was how the Lord behaved Himself, looking unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith, how He behaved Himself with different people in different circumstances, how He dealt with the devil and his temptation in the wilderness before He began His public ministry over there in Luke, Chapter 4. In verse 8, He says, "Get thee behind me, Satan, for it is written." He stood up to the devil. In bandy words with him, He said, "It is written. Resist the devil, and he will flee from you," James 4:7. In His power, in His strength, in His... Don't you be a fool and try to go charging into hell with a squirt gun, okay? That's not what it's talking about, no. Rest in Him. The Lord rebuked him. The lust of the flesh, the lust of the eyes, and the pride of life, what Satan came after him with, as it says over in First John 2. Then he dealt with the Pharisees. He dealt with the Sadducees. He dealt with the lawyers. He dealt with the Herodians. He dealt with the Sanhedrin. Matthew 23, if you're still in Matthew. Matthew 23, not going to read the whole passage here, but pick it up in verse 13. "But woe unto you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites! For ye shut up the kingdom of heaven against men; for ye neither go in yourselves, neither suffer you them that are entering to go in. Woe unto you, scribes, Pharisees, hypocrites; for ye devour widows' houses, and for a pretence make long prayer; therefore ye shall receive the greater damnation. Woe unto you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites; for ye compass sea and land, and make one proselyte; and when he is made, ye make him twofold more the child of hell than yourselves." That goes all the way down to verse 33. Read from 29. "Woe unto you, scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites; because you build the tombs of the prophets, and garnish the sepulchers of the righteous." And say, "If we had been in the days of our fathers, we would not have been partakers with them in the blood of the prophets. Wherefore, you be witnesses unto yourselves, that ye are the children of them which killed the prophets. Fill ye up, then, the measure of your fathers." The Lord never gave one inch to the men like that. Neither should you. But with the humble, with the lowly, with those who were open-hearted, He was very, very different. Turn back to Chapter 11 in Matthew. Matthew, Chapter 11, we want to pick it up in verse 28. Matthew 11, verse 28, down to the end. "Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy-laden; and I'll give you rest." Well, that's every human being on the face of the earth. "Take my yoke upon you, and learn of me; for I am meek and lowly in heart, and you shall find rest under your souls; for my yoke is easy, and my burden is light," compared to what the devil's got to Arphia. The witty old name, the Samaritan woman at the well, Jarius' daughter, the centurion and his servant, the woman with the issue of blood, the Syrophoenian woman and her daughter, the maniac of Gaderah, Lazarus, Martha, Mary, the sick, crippled, the blind, the infirm, the devil-possessed. Compassion, mercy, grace, hope, peace, joy, love. That's what He brought to those folks. And the Lord taught. He taught His apostles. He taught His disciples. He taught in the synagogues. He taught in the temple. He taught in the streets. He taught in the wilderness. He taught up on the mountains. He taught on the seashore, and then out in the sea itself. He taught to crowds of thousands. He taught to individuals. Taught with children. Everywhere He went and to everyone whom He met, the Lord Jesus Christ taught the great truths of God. Again, Matthew 28, verse 19 and 20. Matthew 28, last two verses of that chapter. "Go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost; teaching them to observe all things whatsoever I have commanded you; and lo, I am with you always, even unto the end of the world." Amen. Jesus taught, and so should you. Teach with your words and teach by your actions. But in order to teach, first you need to learn. So learn, then teach to whosoever it is that the Lord places in front of you, your family, your friends, your spouse, your children, your neighbors, your community, your coworkers, fellow church members, or perhaps even on a foreign field somewhere. But teach, teach. The Lord Jesus Christ prayed. What did He pray? He prayed in private. He prayed in public. He prayed with His disciples. He prayed for His disciples. He prayed for His people, the nation of Israel. He prayed for the church, which would be His bride, John 17, verse 20. He even prayed for His enemies, John 23:34. And of course, He prayed for Himself. The Lord prayed often. He was constantly in prayer, in contact with the Father through the Spirit. Prayer was as natural as breathing to the Lord Jesus Christ. And so should prayer be for us as well. We have been given an incredible privilege as the adopted children of God to be able to approach unto our Father at our will any time. Look, folks, don't take it to any other. And being the Word of God, as you read in John, Chapter 1, the Lord Jesus Christ has an absolutely complete and infinite knowledge of the Bible, and so should we. You ought to spend more time in this on a daily basis than you do just about anything else. What an incredible privilege, blessing that's afforded to us. We have the words of God available to us. We can own them. A lot of folks, a lot of believers around the world don't have that privilege. We can have them, and we can know them. His knowledge, His wisdom, His understanding, that, next to our new birth, ought to be the most precious and valuable thing that you possess, the words of God. The Lord Jesus Christ is the Author and Finisher of our faith. 2 Corinthians 5:7, "We walk by faith and not by sight." We are saved by faith. We live by faith. We are empowered, sustained, and guided by our faith. And the Lord Himself is the Author of that faith. He, along with the Father and the Holy Spirit of God, devised the salvation by which we live before anything was even created. This is the great eternal plan. And in absolutely every dispensation since creation, there has been a requirement, there has been an element of faith required in order to be found righteous before God. In fact, in our dispensation, in this church age, where salvation is by grace through faith in the finished work of the Lord Jesus Christ, it's faith and faith alone. There are no works required. There will only be one dispensation in which there is no element of faith required, and that will be during the millennial reign, because the Lord Jesus Christ will be here on the earth as who He is, the only-begotten Son of the Father, as works are long. What an incredible blessing, the time in which we live, where salvation can be obtained, righteousness before God, obtained by just exercising simple faith, believing what God has said, and receiving that free gift. And then, having become human flesh for our sake, for our sake, the Lord Jesus Christ came to this earth at His first advent to live it and to finish it. That's how He lived those thirty-three and a half years, was by faith. And then He finished it, of course, as He cried out there on the cross. He says, "It is finished," there in the cross of Calvary, as He surrendered His mortal body to death, when He became sin for us, who knew no sin, that we might be made the righteousness of God in Him. And then descended down into the horrors of hell to suffer on our behalf, to pay the price. And then, three days later, as had been determined and had been promised, God the Father raised Him up from the dead. The price was paid, and an incredible means of salvation provided, completed, fulfilled, the Bible, Lord Jesus Christ. Souls have been waiting there in paradise for four thousand years, some of them all the way back to Adam, waiting for the coming of the woman's seed, waiting for the coming of the Christ of God, rejoicing, because it's finished, it's done. The price is paid. Sin has been eradicated. We can go to heaven now. Christ led captivity captive up out of hell before He closed the doors behind Him. Those souls in hell who had rejected God's way, those souls in hell, some for four thousand years, weeping and wailing and gnashing of teeth because their faith was sealed, because it's finished. I've said it a great many times, I love the cross of Calvary. But if it hadn't been for the resurrection in that empty tomb, it would have all been for naught. The resurrection for... The resurrection from the dead by the Lord Jesus Christ was the final action that is secured forever, redemption and eternal life to whosoever will. No one else could have done it. No mere mortal human being, descendant from Adam, had the capacity to finish salvation for.